Good evening. This is the regular council meeting of June 11th, 2018. The time is 7:31 PM, and I call this meeting to order. Can I get a roll call, please?
Mayor Protem Bliss.
I'm here.
Councilman Corbett.
Here.
Councilman Geddings.
Here.
Councilor Grextein.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Soltis.
Here.
Mayor Hartwell.
Can I get a motion to excuse Mayor Hartwell?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Corbett.
So moved.
Support, please.
A second?
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now it's time for an invocation by Councilman Corbett, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise if you're willing and able, and stay standing for the pledge.
Infinite wisdom, we thank you for having given us the opportunity to meet together here today, and we ask most humbly for a blessing of our gathering. Brighten our eyes with greater understanding, enrich our hearts with compassion and courage, and again receive our gratitude for this opportunity of fellowship. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, to start things off, any additions or approvals to the agenda tonight?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Corbett.
Sir, I move to add a D3 to the agenda under Reports, entitled "A Resolution to Authorize Purchase of Foreclosed Properties."
All right, is there support?
Support.
Councilor Grextein?
Support.
All those in favor of adding the resolution to purchase foreclosed properties to the agenda under Reports D3, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so now we're going to begin tonight's agenda with a public hearing on the special approval for 623 West 11 Mile Road, which is Salinas. Before council action, we'll open the meeting to the public. Mr. Manager, would you open us off with some comments?
I'd be happy to, Your Honor. Special approval has been requested at 623 West 11 Mile Road for outdoor seating at restaurants in the B3 District. This location was originally denied special approval for outdoor seating by council on June 27th, 2011. The applicant revised the plans and resubmitted for city council special approval, which was granted with conditions on April 23, 2012. Those conditions were, number one, the outdoor seating area is limited to the front or north side of the building; number two, no outdoor speakers; number three, no outdoor flashing lights; number four, no outdoor entertainment; and number five, outdoor seating use hours limited to Sunday through Thursday from noon to 11:00 PM, and Friday and Saturday from noon to 2:00 AM. The approved outdoor seating area was subsequently built and is in operation today. The new owner seeks to expand the outdoor seating area by 16 feet to the east and 36 feet to the south. The proposal would retain the existing approved outdoor seating area as well. The parking, bike rack, and landscaping meet the minimum zoning ordinance requirements, and the proposed hours of operation are Monday through Saturday from 11:00 AM to 2:00 AM, and on Sunday from 12:00 PM to 2:00 AM. The site plan review committee has reviewed the site plan and has no additional comments to address. Should council grant special approval, the committee recommends the council revisit the original conditions to ensure they continue to represent the intent of council. If this request is denied, there is no need for further action, and the existing special approval remains in place. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. So now the meeting is open to the public specifically for comments related to 623 West 11 Mile Road and its special approval. Do we have any comments from the public on this? Please state your name, and any affiliations if you have any, and please try to limit your comments to three minutes or less.
Ronald Davies, and I live at 26759 Brenton Woods, which is just five houses south of Salinas. And we actually have a situation with the parking there, where you don't even have adequate parking now because people are parking down Brenton Woods, and then on the other street, I believe it might be Dartmouth. But, and that's on a Friday, Saturday night, and I've called the police numerous times in regards to fights into the parking lots. And so now if you add on to this bar, you're gonna add more seating, so is that gonna bring the capacity up higher? And then is that, where's these people gonna park? Because they don't even have adequate parking for what they have now. So we're sorta, well, more me than the neighbors, but...
Sir, could you speak into the microphone a little bit more? People are having trouble hearing. I want to make sure everybody hears what you have to say.
Well, they don't have adequate parking for what they have there now. They are parking all the way down Brenton Woods, all the way to Greg Street, on both sides of Brenton, oh, sorry, not both sides of Brenton Woods, but Brenton Woods and then the street on the other side. And so if they add this outside seating, is that gonna bring the capacity level up? And so if that's the case, then where are these people gonna park? Because there is no downtown parking. So, the people in the neighborhood are sorta confused on what this downtown is when there is no parking for a downtown. And so I guess that's about all that we have to say. Well, me, but...
Okay, thank you for your comments. Would anybody else like to speak on this special approval? Okay, I will close the meeting to the public. What's the wish of council?
Mr. Mayor Protem? I would suggest that Jim Schaefer answer that question about the parking situation at Salinas. Maybe he has some insight into it.
Okay, I'd allow that. Mr. Schaefer?
Good evening, Mayor Protem, council. The proposal has 56 parking spaces on the property, and those are existing parking spaces. This would not impact the parking count at all. Our code would require 50, or excuse me, 33 parking spaces total. So, from a code standpoint, not suggesting that there's not a parking issue on the neighborhood streets, from a code standpoint, they're in excess of what would be required by our ordinances.
Thank you. What's the wish of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Scott?
I'd like to ask a question of the petitioner.
Could I get a motion first, so that way we can open discussion?
I move to openly discuss. I have a question to ask of the petitioner.
Okay, I need a, I need a motion and a second to be able to open discussion.
If someone would make a motion and have it seconded, then we can go into discussion.
Okay, I'll put one out there so we can talk. I move to deny the request.
Okay, motion for denial.
It can be substituted against.
Councilman Corbett, do I have support?
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Soltis. Okay, so, motion from Councilman Corbett to deny the request, with support from Councilman Soltis. Open it up for discussion?
All right, if I could ask Mr. Viati, can you tell me, in these instances that you spoke about with the fighting outside and other problems, were they, any of them reported to the police? And was there any action taken?
I've called twice, once with the accident, once with the traffic.
Okay. Okay, so it was handled to your satisfaction, perhaps? Right. Okay, all right, that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Manager, do you have the run stats from the police department for this particular property?
Your Honor, yes, yes, I do. Chief Haynes did report back to me that from January 1st, 2017, through December 31st, 2017, we had 79 calls for service at Salina. Salinas, of those calls, seven generated case reports for, there was one hit-and-run accident, two larcenies, one fraud, two malicious destruction of property reports, and one larceny from a building. In this calendar year, there have been 17 calls for service so far that generated four reports. One was a larceny and assault, two were larcenies, and one was an aggravated and felonious assault. Thank you, Your Honor.
Now, is that higher or lower than we would traditionally see with establishments that serve alcohol in our city?
Your Honor, I don't have those statistics. I would have to report back to council on that.
Okay. Any other discussion from council?
Does, yeah, we're actually just simply going back over the same ground we did a few years ago. But what's the situation with noise? I know about fights and overcrowding in parking, but are there any noise complaints? Because that, my memory is that was the big issue in 2011 with, well, then Councilman Hartwell and Councilman Gerald were talking some extensively about that, and I'm just curious about the, that was the big concern. That was the reason we put the seating on the north end, to direct noise away from the neighborhood. Would you know, or had the police recorded any noise abatement issues?
Your Honor, not that I have with me, but I would report that we had 79 calls for service, and I only have, only seven of those generated case reports. So, that's, that's quite a few that we don't, I don't have documented tonight from, from the PD, so...
Mr. Schaefer, if you could elaborate?
Yeah, the original, council, the original approval, one of the stipulations was no outdoor speakers, no outdoor flashing lights, and no outdoor entertainment. So if that occurs with the existing seating, this has nothing to do with the proposal, then that would be a violation of the special approval. And so in addition to being a code enforcement issue or a police issue, depending on the nature of the complaint, that could potentially impact the viability of the existing special approval. So if that does occur, a call to the city, if it's during hours code enforcement, if it's after hours, the police department, and if we can verify that, then that would become a violation of the existing special approval.
Okay, and Mr. Schaefer, in your knowledge, to your knowledge, has there been any violations of the four, or the five conditions that were, that were open here of the existing special approval?
We had one complaint that was made to code enforcement of a noise outdoor speaker. When code enforcement followed up, there was no evidence anywhere of any outdoor speaker system.
Okay.
That was January of 2017.
January, Your Honor, January 2017, it's the middle of winter. I doubt there were any...
I agree with that.
Sir, the meeting, the meeting has been closed to the public. I appreciate your interest, but we've already had the time to speak, so... Thank you, sir.
I can get the exact data.
Mr. Schaefer?
I can get the exact data if you can.
Awesome, thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes?
Is there any way we could shift the hours a little bit, say they would have to be indoors at midnight instead of 2:00 in the morning? Or would that be impossible to do?
Are you, are you looking to, to shift, for, for the new special approval?
Right.
And then to be able to shift the hours?
Right, just for the outdoors having to come in.
Mr. Schaefer?
Versus 2:00 in the morning, I think you guys got a good point.
To clarify, that was on January 6th, 2017, and it was a citizen complaint, and the inspection occurred mid-afternoon, and there was no violation observed.
Okay, and to Councilman Geddings' question on altering the conditions, this special approval would then, if granted, and the motion on the table is to deny, so you'd have to have a substitute motion on that. But if he made a substitute motion that altered the conditions, would that, would that affect the previous special approval that had been put into place?
My, my understanding of that would be that this would, in effect, supersede and the previous action, and that's why you see the staff comment there relative to revisiting those conditions, which did include hours of operation.
Okay, Mr. Sherman, would that be correct?
Yes, currently, it would supersede it. And currently, they have Sunday through Thursday, noon to 11:00 PM, and Friday through Saturday, noon to 2:00 AM. So therefore, if the, the business owner would, would, the substitute motion would not benefit the business owner, the business owner would probably stay with what it currently has right now, which is the, which is the 11:00 PM, noon to 11:00 PM, Saturday, Sunday through Thursday, and, and noon to 2:00 AM, Friday through Saturday. In addition to that, if, if council were inclined to deny it, when we get to that part, you will have to state specifically the provisions in 10.803, that, the reasons for the denial. We'll have to put that on the record, and I can take you through that, if that's what council's inclined to do.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, Councilwoman Scott?
I would like to ask a question of Mr. Schaefer. I know that that changed hands recently, Salinas, by Mr. Mancini, is now the new own, is he the new owner or manager?
My understanding is that the property has changed hands, and it's under new ownership.
Okay, did we notice anything improved when he took over? Was there changes, or did they stay the same?
We have not had any code issues of late, or recently.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
We have not had any code issues or compliance issues that have been reported to community development.
Okay.
I'm not referring to the police department calls. And I want to say, I'm not sure exactly when the property transfer happened, but it's been, it's been over, it's been over a year since we received any complaints.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Schaefer, is the owner in the audience?
Yes, yes.
Yes, if you're willing, I'd, I'd like to open back up to allow you to give some comments as to what you're looking to do with this space, and maybe counter any of the dialogue that's been made to your establishment right now. So yes, please. Open back up to the public?
My name's Anthony Mancini, I'm the owner of Salinas. Anthony Mancini, the owner of Salinas. We took over Salinas on June 21st of last year, and what we, what we basically want to do is our patio, we use all day, all night. People sit out there, they eat, they hang out out there, young and old. I mean, you only get three months of summer in Michigan, so people really enjoy it, and we just wanted to expand it. We're only losing three parking spaces, so, and we're gonna move the handicap down, so we'll have a handicap that would actually be closer to the front door. I, since I've taken over Salinas, I've probably put $50,000 in improvements, from tables to coolers to everything. I got Salinas food to almost a 60/40. We sell 40% food to a 60 beer and liquor, which is unheard of. They, they never did that. So, I mean, yeah, we're doing everything to make, to turn this around. We did have, we did have two fights, and it's in a parking lot. I own four other bars. We have fights there, too. People have fights at a bar. So that did happen, but we called the police, and they were handled. It's just like any other, any other place. I mean, it's gonna, it can happen in a mall. With the parking down the street, there's been days when we'll have big parties, like after a football game, a Madison football game, it gets busy. Like, I'm sorry, that's what happens, so people do park. But that's like been twice. Like, that's really it. It's not, the parking lot has 53 spots, so people park. A lot of people use Uber now, so it, it's, it's going good. I mean, we're getting a lot of business from the Royal Oak, the Ferndale area, so everything, everything's on the, going well there. And we just wanted to expand the patio, that's, that's really it. But we have made a tremendous amount of improvements.
Okay. Is there anyone on council who has any questions? Your Honor? Yes, Councilman Soltis?
Do you have bouncers that work for you?
Yes, we have four on a Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. Like, I'm seriously, this happened two, it was in the parking lot, like when people left. Like, I mean, it's, it's gonna happen in a bar.
Okay.
Could we have the motion read again, please?
The motion, the motion is to deny the special approval right now.
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Soltis?
I see in the notes that a few years ago, or more than, a little four, four or five years ago?
Yes.
Was it, was voted on before and was turned down?
No, keep reading. I'm sorry. Keep, keep reading to the next page.
Yes.
All right, just go ahead and tell me.
You're, okay, Your Honor, yes.
Mr. Mayor Protem, the, the, it was initially denied, the initial request back in 2011 was to have outdoor seating on the side of the building, essentially in the area where it's, it's proposed with this proposal. That was denied. They came back a short time later with a revised proposal to put all of the outdoor seating in the front of the building, which it currently is, and that proposal was approved with the conditions that were noted in the staff report.
Does anybody have any more questions for the owner?
No, I'm, Mr. Mayor, I, I'm willing to, to withdraw my motion and consider some other action on it, if the second wants, if not will.
If the second agrees?
Yes.
Okay.
Then, which case, then I would offer a new motion, which is a motion to approve, subject to the conditions continuing that have been noted in the report.
Okay, motion to approve, subject to the same conditions that were noted in the notes. Do we have a second?
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Soltis?
Second.
And I guess I just have one question for the owner. Mr. Geddings has floated an idea of limiting the outdoor seating until midnight. Can you talk about what kind of a burden that might be on your business? If any.
It probably would be during the weekends. I mean, during the week, it's not really that busy at midnight or 1:00, but on the weekends, it'd have to get everybody off the patio. So I don't, I don't know how that would work out.
Because you're open till 2:00, right?
Right.
Anyway?
Yeah, and I mean, there, I know there was one gentleman that was, you know, negative about it, but there's probably 10 people that live down the street that are there right now.
Well, I will, I will say this, I don't remember which one of the two or three meetings, because I think we saw it over at zoning, too, but there were more people angry seven years ago than, I mean, obviously, the gentleman just had a bad experience, and I, and I'm sorry about that, but, but I don't know that the rest of, that your neighbors have had that kind of an experience, I think.
I think Bobby would be here, though.
So, I mean, that's just my, my view, so, I'm, I'm gonna leave the motion as it is. If council wants to do something else, that's fine, but just a straight approval from me.
Okay, Mayor Protem?
The, the conditions, the conditions, obviously, two of them have changed. The, the first condition was the outdoor seating area is limited to the front north side of the building. That would be changed, because now they're heading further south and then east, based on the proposal.
Outdoor seating limited to the dimensions of the current proposal.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify, so the continuation of the provisions would be no outdoor speakers, no outdoor flashing lights?
Yes, sir.
No outdoor entertainment? And then, of course, what they're proposing is different from the outdoor seating use hours that they previously, that they previously had. They're proposing Monday through Saturday from 11:00 AM to 2:00 AM, and then Sunday from 12:00 PM to, to 2:00 AM.
Yes, and I, and I would incorporate that change also as part of the proposal if the second, I'm sorry, I think I scratched.
Okay, Councilman Soltis, do you agree?
Yes.
Okay. So, is there, is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak on this particular special approval?
I think he left.
Close it back. What's the wish of council? Any other final comments before we vote?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Scott?
I would like to comment on Mr. Mancini. I know that you have sponsored the pub crawl at least twice, have you not? Or, I know you did it at least once, the last year and the year before that. Is that correct?
I, I, to be honest, we don't know.
That was to raise money for our Memorial Day parade.
It's been that, I, I'm sure we have. I don't know, but we'll be honest with you.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to say that I had attended that several years ago, when they had the pub crawl, and it, your operation is now much better and much improved over the course of time, and I had the pleasure of meeting you that night, and you seemed very accommodating to us. So I wanted to mention that, that I, I feel there's a lot of improvement in that, in the whole operation.
I appreciate it. And we're, we're gonna build like a, a night, this ain't just an open space, we're gonna haunt and everything, it's gonna be, you know, we're investing in this as well.
Right.
But, thank you.
Okay. So the motion is to grant special approval to 623 West 11 Mile Road, which is Salinas, with the conditions that the outdoor seating area is limited to the dimensions of the proposal. There will be no outdoor speakers, no outdoor flashing lights, no outdoor entertainment, and the hours of operation will be Monday through Saturday from 11:00 AM to 2:00 AM, and on Sunday from 12:00 PM to 2:00 AM. Motion was made by Councilman Corbett and seconded by Councilman Soltis. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Say no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. So now, we'll open the meeting to the public. Anyone can talk on any topic. It would be very helpful if you could give your name, address, any affiliation, and please limit your comments to three minutes or less.
Hello. My name is Karas Coolman. I live at 27766 Rialto Street. We're having an invasion of rats, from Rosie's, the dumpster. There's a rat trap all along the fence in the park. We have families of rats. A rat can have a clutch every 20 days. We have baby rats, and big rats. It's getting worse. I believe Mr. Palazzolo talked with animal control a couple of times. They left a trap, told him if he caught any rats, to dispose of them. This problem has been caused by the city. I think the city needs to get exterminators down there and address this problem. It's a health issue, a quality of life issue. We don't want rats in our neighborhood. I don't know what you're gonna do, but I hope you do it fast. I, I can't see any reason for that big dumpster being there. They say, well, they built an enclosure, but the gate on the front of that enclosure is six inches off the ground. A rat doesn't need that much room. We want to know what you're gonna do. Any ideas?
We'll, we'll take that back right away to animal control and DPS in regard to the dumpster, and we'll take a serious look at it.
I beg your pardon?
We'll take a serious look at it with animal control and DPS in terms of the dumpster that's in Rosie's Park.
Okay. I gotta say, I read about your retirement, Mr. Myers, and I was very sore to see that. I think you've done a good job, and I really hate to see you go.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I will also say, there's a very different feeling in council chambers. It's not a good one. It used to be a happy place. It's not now. You have to look inside and figure out why.
Thank you for your comments. Would anybody else like to address council?
Jim Capizzi, 6319. I was just talking to my neighbor the other day. He moved up here from Downriver, and he, I don't remember the city, but he said, the garbage cans out on the street, they had to have tops on, they just couldn't have, like, open containers for garbage. I don't know if that's a factor or not, that's my comment.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Donna Mitchell. I'm also affiliated with Donna's Christmas line, but that's not why I'm here. I want to let everyone know that we attended our police department and fire department open house. I was extremely impressed. It was just my boyfriend and I. We didn't... boyfriend and I. We didn't have any of our grandkids with us, and the two of us, in our 40s, had a wonderful time. We went and spoke to our lovely guys at the fire department, and they had us laughing. They were entertaining us. They, anything that we needed help with, they were right there. So I just want to congratulate our wonderful officers in the fire department on such a wonderful job.
They do a great job, huh?
Yes, they do.
Yeah, thank you for your comments.
And I was.
Appreciate it. All right. Would anybody else like to address council? Okay. All right, we'll close the meeting to the public. Next up on the agenda is Communications C1, the resignation of the Arts and Culture Advisory Board by Lauren Gadwa.
Yes, your honor, a member of the Arts and Culture Advisory Board, Lauren Gadwa, has submitted a resignation from the board, and staff and I recommend that council accept the resignation and declare the seat vacant.
Okay. What's the wish of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Corbett?
I move that the council accept the resignation of Ms. Gudah, declare vacant her, her seat on the Arts and Culture Board, and issue the appropriate resolution of thanks.
Okay. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Graffstein?
A second.
Any comments? Okay. Motion to accept the resignation of Lauren Gadwa from the Arts and Culture Advisory Board, made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilor Graffstein, also declares the seat vacant, as well as issue the appropriate proclamation of thanks. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Say no. Motion carries. Okay, next up on the agenda is C2, and that's a request to hold a community barbecue.
Yes, your honor. Donna Mitchell and Donna's Christmas Land have requested to use Rosie's Park to hold a community barbecue and fundraiser on Saturday, July 14th, from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Staff, the city attorney's office, and I recommend that council approve Donna Mitchell's request, acting individually and or calling herself Donna's Christmas Land, to use Rosie's Park for the fundraiser on July 14th, 2018, subject to council's policy on uniform insurance requirements for special events, and subject to the one-day food license from Oakland County for the sale of food. And I would note that no city fees are applicable for this event. Thank you, your honor.
Okay. What's the wish of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Scott?
I move to approve the event, subject to council's policy on uniform insurance requirements for special events, for the Donna's Christmas Land request to hold community barbecue and fundraising event at Rosie's Park on July 14th, 2018.
Okay. Yes?
Your honor, would the motion include, subject to the one-day food license from Oakland County as well?
Yes, and there are no applicable fees to be assessed.
Okay. Is there support?
Your honor?
Yes, Councilor Graffstein?
Support.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Motion by Councilwoman Scott to approve the request of the community barbecue and event at Rosie's Park on July 14th by Donna Mitchell and Donna's Christmas Land, subject to approval of the uniform insurance requirements, as well as the one-day health license. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say no. Motion carries. Okay, next up is Reports D1, the retirement transition agreement and purchase of service credit.
Yes, your honor. In order to implement the retirement and transition agreement approved by council on May 14th, 2018, and in accordance with the city's retirement plan document, the municipal employees' retirement system, or MERS, requires the local governing body's approval of a resolution authorizing the purchase of service credit for the city manager. Funds must also be appropriated for this purchase in the amount of $45,213. Council is requested to take two actions. First, to approve the resolution and authorize the deputy city manager to sign on behalf of the city, and second, to appropriate the necessary funds, which requires a supermajority vote.
Okay. What's the wish of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, your honor.
Yes, Councilman Corbett?
Just one clarification. Only the second item requires a supermajority vote, the appropriation. Thank you, your honor.
I move that the council adopt the recommended resolution regarding the retirement and transition of Mr. Myers, and we authorize the deputy city manager to sign on behalf of the community.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, Councilman Scott?
I would like to second that motion.
Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. And then, the second piece, which is the appropriation of $45,213. What's the wish of council on that?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the council appropriate $45,213 in execution of the retirement agreement.
Okay. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Scott?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilman Corbett, and second by Councilwoman Scott. Is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Mr. Mayor Protem? Can we have a roll call vote, please? That's, requires a supermajority.
Okay. Can we get a roll call?
Yes. Councilwoman Scott?
Yes.
Councilman Soltis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bliss?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Gettings?
Yes.
Councilor Graffstein?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. All right, next up is a Report D2 from the DPS director on the West Nile virus abatement reimbursement resolution.
Yes, Mayor Protem. The city of Massites is again eligible for reimbursement from Oakland County for project expenses related to our fight against the West Nile virus. The Department of Public Services recently sent crews out in May to drop larvicide briquettes in each residential catch basin throughout the entire city. These briquettes, which last 180 days, present mosquito larvae from maturing into adults, significantly reducing the summer mosquito population. Basins will be tested periodically to assure that the larvicide is doing its job. DPS is also responsible for treating areas of standing water in the parks and commercial and industrial areas, such as stormwater retention and detention ponds and fountains, with larvicide on a monthly basis. Staff and I recommend that council approve the resolution to allow the city to receive reimbursement from Oakland County in the amount of $3,910.84.
Okay. What's the wish of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Corbett?
Sir, I move that the council approve the recommended, approve the suggested resolution regarding the West Nile virus abatement reimbursement, which will allow the city to receive reimbursement from Oakland County in the amount of $3,910.84.
Really had to rush to get that motion in there, huh?
Yeah.
Is there support?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Councilman Gettings?
Support.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All right, a motion from Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilman Gettings, to adopt and approve the resolution requesting the annual West Nile virus fund expense reimbursement from Oakland County in the amount of $3,910.84. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now we have the item that was added to the agenda, Reports under D3, Resolution to Purchase Foreclosed Properties.
Yes, your honor. Staff and I recommend that council approve the resolution authorizing the purchase of 14 foreclosed properties from Oakland County pursuant to Section 211.78M, subsection 1 of Public Act 123 of 1999, and to authorize the deputy city manager to sign all necessary documents on behalf of the city, and I would note that a vote supermajority is required. Thank you.
Okay. What's the wish of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Corbett?
I move that the council adopt the suggested resolution to authorize purchase of foreclosed properties.
Okay. Is there support?
Your honor?
Councilor Graffstein?
Support.
All right. Any comments?
Your honor, would that also include authorizing the deputy city manager to sign all necessary documents on behalf of the city?
You betcha.
Support?
Yes.
Awesome. All right. Any comments from council? Okay. So this motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilor Graffstein, to approve the resolution to purchase foreclosed properties and authorize the deputy city manager to sign on behalf of the city. We need a roll call vote? Yes. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Ready?
Yep.
Councilman Soltis?
No.
Mayor Protem Bliss?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Gettings?
Yes.
Councilor Graffstein?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scott?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes five to one, hitting the supermajority. All right, we have nothing under Item Z, the items for future public hearings, so we move on to bid awards and purchases. F1, which is the fire department ambulance replacement.
The adopted fiscal year 2019 budget includes a scheduled replacement of Rescue 711, which is a, which is a 2009 Navistar Horton ambulance with over 86,000 miles. This past April, a staff committee began the evaluation of a new rescue ambulance with the goal of selecting a manufacturer and design that best fit the community's needs through a review of all aspects of the vehicle design to ensure the city receives the most efficient and cost-effective ambulance. These efforts put into the most, the efforts put into the most recent rescue purchase in 2014 helped to streamline this evaluation process. The committee recommended only a few changes from the fire department's newest rescue. These modifications include switching from a Freightliner medium-duty chassis to a Ford F-550 four-by-four chassis, and converting the interior patient compartment from wood construction to an all-aluminum compartment design. As was done in 2014, the city utilized its interlocal cooperative purchasing contract with the Houston-Galveston Area Council, allowing the city to access volume purchasing and discounts and improving the efficiency of the procurement process. The committee agreed that the road rescue model ambulance provides the city with the best ambulance possible while maintaining fiscal responsibility. Emergency Vehicles Plus is the authorized dealer for road rescue in the state of Michigan and is the dealer the city used for the 2014 rescue purchase. Applying a trade-in of the existing ambulance, a Ford discount, and a partial prepayment discount to the vehicle cost of $251,870, the quote received from Emergency Vehicles Plus through the Houston-Galveston program is $221,180. Staff and I recommend the council approve the purchase of a 2018 road rescue ambulance from the most qualified bidder under the Houston-Galveston Area Council Cooperative Purchasing Program, Emergency Vehicles Plus, in the total amount of $221,180. And I would note that funds are budgeted and available for this purchase.
Okay. What's the wish of council?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, Councilwoman Scott?
I would like to move the council approve the purchase of a 2018 road rescue ambulance from the most qualified bidder under the Houston-Galveston Area Council Cooperative Purchasing Program, Emergency Vehicles Plus, in the total amount of $221,180.
Is there support?
Your honor?
Yes, Councilman Soltis?
Support.
All right. Any discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Corbett?
Just a quick question. How is it that, that we're getting this through the Houston-Galveston Area Cooperative? It's a little out of Dodge here.
Welcome to the internet age.
Yeah, your honor, there are, there are a number of, of national purchasing consortia out there. This, this is one of them. In fact, I, I will tell you that I, I had occasion to run into Michael Lasly the other day, who was our former purchasing officer back in the day, and longtime purchasing director for Farmington Hills, and we discussed this, and he was, he was very familiar with Houston-Galveston. There, there are a number out there, and I know firefighter Gilson, who's here representing Chief Alito, has done a lot of work in this area and is familiar with him, too.
Just out of curiosity, do they drive it here or truck it here?
Mr. Gilson?
The answer to that is potentially either-or. The one we got in 2014 was drove up from Florida. It just depends on if they have more than one truck to come up, then they'll put them on like a semi-truck, trailer, but this, the one we got last was drove up.
All right.
Any other discussion? Okay. So, the motion was made by Councilwoman Scott, with the second by Councilman Soltis, to purchase the road rescue ambulance from Emergency Vehicles Plus in the amount of $221,180. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say no. Motion carries. Next up on the list, we have F2, a DPS tandem axle dump truck replacement.
Yes, your honor. The adopted fiscal 2019 budget includes a scheduled replacement of Vehicle 422, a 2003 Sterling tandem axle dump truck. As with prior recent dump truck replacements, the city is able to utilize, and this is another cooperative purchasing contract that we've used, the city of Rochester Hills. This cooperative bid was awarded to Truck and Trailer Specialties for the truck body and other equipment, and Wolverine Freightliner for the chassis. Vehicle 422 was the first replacement dump truck delivered after the 2003 DPS fire, and after 15 years of service, it's merited a poor-condition rating of 35 points that warrants a priority replacement. This truck is used year-round for water main installation hauling, leaf collection, snow removal services, and emergency water main brake hauling. Although the primary duties of the truck are related to water and sewer operations, it also supplements the snow removal process and has been outfitted with standard winter equipment, including a front, a front plow, underbody scraper, wing plow, and a removable tailgate spreader. Based on past experience and the current quoted, current quoted lead time from both Truck and Trailer Specialties and Wolverine Freightliner, the expected delivery of the truck is approaching one year from the order date. Based on these facts, staff and I are requesting approval of this purchase ahead of the new fiscal year, but delivery and payment of the vehicle will take place well after July 1st, which is the beginning of our new fiscal year. Staff and I recommend that council award the purchase of one tandem axle dump truck chassis to Wolverine Freightliner in the amount of $101,161, and the body and other equipment to Truck and Trailer Specialties in the amount of $114,365, under the terms of the Rochester Hills Cooperative Purchasing Bid for a total amount of $214,796. Funds are budgeted and available in the fiscal 2019 adopted budget for this purchase. Thank you.
Okay. What's the wish of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Corbett?
Sir, I move that the council award the purchase of one tandem axle dump truck chassis to Wolverine Freightliner in the amount of $101,161, and the body and other equipment to Truck and Trailer Specialties in the amount of $114,363, under the terms of the Rochester Hills Cooperative Purchasing Bid, a total amount of $214,796. The funds are budgeted and available in the FY 1819 adopted budget for this purchase.
Okay. Is, is there support?
Hold on, I did something wrong. Sixty-three what?
Did you miss the number?
Sixty-three, it should have been three sixty-five.
One hundred fourteen thousand three sixty-four.
Will you adopt that?
Three hundred sixty-five.
Okay.
I got cocky. What can you say?
Is there a support?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, Councilwoman Scott?
I would like to second that.
Awesome. Any discussion from council? Okay, I, if, Mr. Vitale, if you could, if you'd be so kind as to come up, I'd love to hear about the use of the vehicle, and also, it's nice to note that this is coming in, what, five grand under budget, so, good job.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, council. This is one dump truck of the many that we have. This is a tandem axle dump truck. We have seven of those in the fleet, and we're moving one over to the newer side, which is certainly a benefit to, to the department. As noted in the memo, this truck moves all year long, whether it's during water main construction season, snow, leaf pickup, or just general hauling. We will be using this truck from the point of delivery to us, so certainly a benefit to the department, and we're looking forward to getting it.
And what are, what are the benefits on the, on the newer model here?
Well, it, one of the immediate benefits of these trucks are the technology. We see them come outfitted with the technology where we can calibrate our salt and brine usage, which is really nice to us, so we've certainly, certainly seen the trend where we're using less salt, putting a little bit more brine on the road, and seeing some improvements there, certainly.
Very cool. Any other questions from council? Okay. Okay, so we had a motion from Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to award the purchase of one tandem axle dump truck chassis to Wolverine Freightliner in the amount of one-hundred-thousand one-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars, and the body and other equipment to Truck and Trailer, which is under the terms of the Rochester Hills Cooperative Purchasing Bid, for a total amount of two-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand seven-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars. Is, all those in favor? I guess. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Uh, there's nothing under G ordinances or unfinished business, so we can move right into, uh, the adoption of the minutes of the last council meeting of May twenty-ninth, twenty-eighteen. What's the wish of council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Uh, Councilman Soltis?
Uh, make a motion that we adopt the city council minutes of May twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen, twenty-fifteen, excuse me.
As printed?
As printed.
Okay. Uh, any support?
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Councilwoman Geddings?
Support.
Okay, a motion by Councilman Soltis, seconded by Councilman Geddings, so doubt the minutes is printed. Any comments? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
I would need to abstain for that vote.
Okay.
I was not present.
Let the record reflect.
Yeah.
So five ayes, one abstention. Okay, so now we get to appointments. Um, there are some mayor's appointments that I, I will punt, and we will let Mayor Hartwell do when he gets back, uh, but there are a couple, uh, outside of that. There are four on the Arts and Culture Advisory Board and one on the Library Advisory Board. Uh, let's maybe start with the Library Advisory Board. Uh, would anybody like to make a motion on Alexander Bedd?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Corbett.
I'd move to reappoint Mr. Bedd to a term on the Library Advisory Board. That term will expire, uh, July first, twenty-twenty.
Okay, any support?
Your honor.
Yes, Ms. Soltis. Okay, motion by Councilman Corbett to reappoint, uh, Alexander Bedd to a term. Uh, when did that expire?
Twenty-twenty, July first.
July one, twenty-twenty, seconded by Councilman Soltis. Uh, any comments from council? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Uh, so we have four, uh, four folks, uh, who applied for the four seats to the Arts and Culture Advisory Board. Uh, there are two open seats now that we've declared the seat vacant, uh, for Lauren Gadewa's, which, that one expires on nine twenty-five nineteen, and there's also another full seat that is nine twenty-five eighteen. Uh, there are four people who've applied. Uh, there are those two seats, as well as the two alternates, Rachel Flanagan, Kimberly Clark, Susan Bircham, and Maisha Fennick. Uh, the first two to put in, uh, their applications were Rachel Flanagan on five twenty-six and Kimberly Clark on five twenty-nine. Uh, what's the wish of council on these?
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes, Councilwoman Scott.
In consideration of the dates that these individuals have applied, um, I move to appoint Rachel Flanagan to a full term on the Arts and Culture Board for a term expiring on September twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-one. It's a three-year term.
Would that be, that would be nineteen, right? Uh, so number twenty-fifth, nineteen?
It's a three-year term.
Yeah, they were staggered to start, so the longest one we have, if I'm not correct, or if I'm not mistaken, is for the nineteen.
That's correct, Mayor Protem. Those are, they're filling vacancies.
Okay.
Okay, so nine twenty-five nineteen is the longest term.
Okay.
You'd like to nominate her for that?
Yes.
Okay, is there support?
Mr. Mayor, support.
Okay. Motion by Councilwoman Scott, seconded by Councilman Corbett to appoint Rachel Flanagan to the full seat on the Arts and Culture Advisory Board, which expires nine twenty-five nineteen. Uh, is there any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Uh, so next, uh, in the application list is Kimberly Clark, and there is one more full seat left, uh, which is nine twenty-five eighteen. Uh, is there a motion for that?
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes, Councilwoman Scott.
I move to appoint Kimberly Clark to the first alternate.
Uh, there, there is a full seat, nine twenty-five eighteen is a full seat.
Then I would like to move to appoint Kimberly Clark to that seat, um, expiring on, um, nine twenty-five, two thousand and twenty. Is that correct?
No, eighteen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, yep.
Is there support?
Support, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Councilman Geddings, support?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, motion by Councilwoman Scott, seconded by Councilman Geddings, to appoint Kimberly Clark to the full seat on the Arts and Culture Advisory Board with an expiration date of nine twenty-five eighteen. Uh, any comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, so the two remaining are Susan Bircham and Maisha Fennick. Uh, Susan was a few days earlier. We have a first and second alternate slot available. Uh, what's the wish of council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Scott.
I would like to move to appoint Susan Bircham for a, um, seat on the Arts and Advisor, Arts and Culture Advisory Board for a term to expire on nine twenty-five nineteen. Twenty, I'm sorry, nine twenty. Let me get this right, nine twenty-five, two thousand and twenty.
And that's for the first alternate seat?
Yes.
Okay. Now, is there support?
Your honor.
Yes, Councilman Soltis.
Support.
Okay, motion by Councilwoman Scott, seconded by Councilman Soltis, to appoint Susan Bircham to the first alternate seat on the Arts and Culture Advisory Board with an expiration of nine twenty-five, twenty-twenty. Uh, any comments?
Mr. Mr. Mayor Protem.
Yes, Councilwoman Scott.
I would just like to mention, um, as a, a point of pride is that Susan's daughter, Erin Bircham, graduated from Lampier High School last year, and she won an arts contest in Ferndale, and her picture that she, um, submitted, which was called Blue Moods, will be painted on a building in Ferndale.
Oh, very cool.
Yeah.
She'd be a great addition to the Arts and Culture Board. All right, any more comments? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. All right, we have one last applicant for Arts and Culture, uh, Maisha Fennick. Uh, is there a motion to appoint her to the second alternate seat, which is nine twenty-five nineteen?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
So moved, so moved.
You broke, uh, Councilwoman Scott's run there. All right, motion by Councilman Geddings to appoint Maisha Fennick. Uh, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, yes, Councilwoman Scott.
Okay, I second that.
Okay, uh, motion by Councilman Geddings, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, uh, to appoint Maisha Fennick to the second alternate seat with an expiration of nine twenty-five nineteen on the Arts and Culture Advisory Board. Uh, any comments? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay, that is it for the appointments. Thank you, everybody in the audience, for, uh, hanging in there through all of that. Uh, now we move on to closing comments. Uh, we will start with Councilman Corbett.
Just one item, just wanted to mention that, uh, I'll be having my last, uh, office hours for the year on Friday from one to three. Uh, if anybody'd like to stop in and talk about an issue, or have a question, or anything with the city, uh, we're right up at the library from one to three. We, um, I will resume it again in the fall, in September, but, um, that's it. Thank you. Good job, uh, Mayor Protem.
All right, Councilman Geddings. Anything tonight?
Yes, sir. Just to remind everyone about the festival in the park coming up, I believe, Joe, on June twenty-fourth, uh, evening, the activities begin at seven with fireworks around ten P.M. Hope everybody can come out. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Awesome. Mr. Sherman, anything tonight?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Mr. Myers?
Just, just one clarification. Our, our offstage entertainment for the festival begins at six. Oh, really? On the twenty-fourth, six to, six to nine. Six P.M. Um, the live entertainment, I, it starts at seven o'clock, but, but, uh, yeah, at six o'clock, we'll have the Oakland County Inflatables again, uh, food, uh, face painting, all that good stuff. Our, uh, our band this year is Stiletto Five, and it's a, uh, looks like it's a nine-member, nine-member band, so, uh, and of course, the fireworks at ten, so, that's all, Mr. Mayor Protem. Thank you.
Awesome. Ms. Prince?
Yes, uh, the state primary election is Tuesday, August seventh. If anybody would like an absentee ballot, please feel free to stop by the office or call our office at two-four-eight-five-eight-three-oh-eight-two-six. We chime in an application. You had to fill out an application in order to get a ballot. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Graffstein?
I'd like to echo what, uh, Donna said about the bike rodeo. I didn't make it over to the fire station. We biked over to the bike rodeo, and it started to rain, so we, uh, we had to cut it short, but even with the rain, there seemed to be a lot of people, um, enjoying themselves, so thank you to the police and the fire for putting that on.
Awesome. Councilwoman Scott, anything tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, Mayor Protem, I would like to, as a member of the Senior Citizen Advisory Board, I would like to remind everybody that we have now reinstituted our awards for beautification in our city, but in order for you to be a subject to judging, you need to call in and either report yourself, if you feel you have a nice property and garden and you've worked hard, you just certainly deserve to be considered. Uh, so you can call in and submit any names with addresses, and the senior commission will be going out on June nineteenth at four-thirty and looking at all the nominees and deciding which ones would deserve their awards of city beautification. So I encourage you all to do that. And I would like to also say thank you again to Donna Mitchell for working on this community barbecue picnic. It's very enlightening, and I think that takes a hard work on your part, and I'm looking forward to being there. Thank you very much. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Councilman Soltis?
Nothing, your honor.
Nothing tonight? Okay, so I have a couple of things. Um, you know, we just appointed four people to the Arts and Culture Advisory Board, so I feel it's worth noting that, uh, first sets of programming from this new board is actually starting this week. Uh, so, as those of you may know, uh, the board did a giant citywide photo contest where they solicited photos from residents. Uh, we got over a hundred submissions, um, all different ages and backgrounds, and, and the photos were amazing. I mean, just amazing. A group of professional photographers, uh, including Councilwoman Scott, uh, all, five judges, uh, judges of the photos, narrowed it down to a top eighteen that will be included in the calendar, and the top three are actually going to receive prize money. Uh, this is going to be done at a photo reveal and reception that'll take place here in City Hall on Thursday night. The doors open at six-thirty, the winners will be announced at seven. Uh, so make sure, uh, make sure if you're interested in, uh, arts or photography, or if you just want some really, really nice, uh, free food, uh, one of our board members is actually making truffles, so, uh, and they are wonderful. So please, please come out, please enjoy it, uh, support, uh, the growing movement of arts in our city, and if you can't make it for that night, uh, there will be an exhibition at the J.C. Building, which is right at the foot of the hill, on the night of the fireworks. The doors of that pop-up exhibition will actually open at six o'clock, the same as when the entertainment starts, um, and then it'll, uh, run through, so, please, uh, come out, uh, support those that, uh, that submitted, uh, enjoy the, enjoy the artwork, and, uh, if you are so moved, uh, feel free to buy the calendar with all of the winners in it, uh, and that'll support, uh, ongoing arts and cultural programming in our city. Uh, any other comments from council?[1734.82]